Yes.
Great. Thank you all for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores, Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four at ten, approximately ten thirty A M. I want to thank you for your patience. We did experience some technical issues prior to this hearing. I want to note for the record that the Zoom link that was provided in the notice materials that were mailed to property owners in the vicinity contained an incorrect meeting ID. But we confirmed that the notice that was provided in the Daily World contained the correct meeting ID and Marshall, perhaps we can just swear you in real quick so we can get this on the record?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you just go ahead and state and spell your name for the record and explain your role with the city?
Sure. Yeah, my name is Marshall Reed, spelled M A R S H A L L. Last name is Reed, R E A D, and I serve as Lead Planner for the City of Ocean Shores in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Can you just confirm that my summary of the the notice issues are correct?
Yes, those you outlined the the occurrence of the the Zoom ID link correctly.
And then, so what I did this morning was I I looked at the notice materials that were sent to property owners in the vicinity, and that did contain a number for the Planning Department. And so what I wanted to do was delay the start of this hearing so that if there were any members of the public trying to access this hearing via that incorrect link that they could call the Planning Department and get the correct information. And I believe that there were no calls, so I don't believe that there's any members of the public wishing to attend this hearing virtually that are unable to do so. And then, Mr. Reed, can you just confirm that there were no calls to the Planning Department regarding this meeting?
Yeah, my planner, Chris Rowe, just returned from the Planning Department after monitoring the phone for several minutes during the time in which the original hearing was supposed to start, and no calls were received.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to get that all on the record. Turning to our agenda today, we have three items on the agenda. And I believe we're going to be starting with number R U E twenty-four zero 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 seven. A request for approval of a reasonable use exception, or RU for short, to allow for the development of a single-family residence and access driveway that would impact a category four wetland and its associated buffer on an approximately point one seven acre property located at three forty-five South Wenuchi Drive Southwest. My name is Peregrine Sorter. I'm a Hearing Examiner with Lamina Law, whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. And it will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether the proposal complies with the City Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a reasonable use exception. To that end, I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of this hearing. These include the staff report that was prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, a wetland report prepared by Aguatiera, various notice materials, and the applicant's joint aquatic resources permit application or JARPA form. I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation because were my decision to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing, along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision, would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those who are testifying. I am not trying to trip anyone up. I am just trying to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal so that after the record closes, I am able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe we're going to be following today, is first we will hear from city staff. Mr. Frometh, you're, thank you, who will provide an overview of the proposal, along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we'll hear from the applicant and see if they have any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify. And finally, following any public testimony, we will turn back to the applicant and the city as necessary for any response. So with that, I think we can get started. Who do we have on behalf of the city for this first matter?
I will be presenting for the city on the first matter, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. You're under oath. Did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I'd review in advance of the hearing?
Yes, they did.
Thank you. So you can go ahead and proceed with your presentation when ready.
Okay, so I'm going to present the staff report for the Neville's proposal. This is R U E twenty-four dash zero 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 seven. They do the report September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. The purpose is an application for a reasonable use exception to authorize impacts to a wetland for a single-family residence in an R one zone. The applicants are Gerald and Tenora Neville's, located in Kent, Washington. The project name is the Neville's Gerald and Tenora Parcel Number oh nine two three zero 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 two eight nine zero zero at Division Block and Lot eleven, Lot number two eighty-nine. The site address for the proposal is three forty-five South Wenuchi Drive Southwest. This is a seven thousand four hundred and eighty square foot lot, and the proposal is to impact five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine square feet of category four wetland. The existing conditions of zoning are R one, the land use is single-family, and the shoreline jurisdiction does not apply in this case. There's no shoreline associated with this project. The zoning. Current conditions to the north, south, east, and west, all parcels are zoned R one, single-family. The land use designation is the same all the way around, north, south, east, and west are single-family parcels. And the existing land use also, single-family residences on all four quadrants, north, south, east, and west. The subject property address at three forty-five South Wenuchi Drive is located in the southwest corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is Reba Street, roughly two hundred and sixty feet southwest. The the property is owned R one and is located in a single-family zone. The zoning in the immediate vicinity is exclusively R one, and impacting the lot for a single-family dwelling is a permitted use in this district. The public hearing notices for the reasonable use exception, R U E twenty-four, number seven, scheduled for Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four at ten A M., were sent out to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, as required by Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty-two oh ninety. The hearing information was also available on the City of Ocean Shores website, and notices were provided to the Daily World newspaper for publication in the September sixteenth and September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four editions. Staff analysis, the staff has determined that this proposed development project is listed as a permitted use in the as defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen sixteen oh twenty A. There are wetlands and buffer existing on this parcel and the surrounding parcels, which require the application of and approval of a reasonable use exception to impact any of these wetlands or associated buffer. The propose, excuse me, the purpose of the R U E is to allow use of the parcel that would be allowed and is in all respects otherwise in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city, provided that all reasonable measures to avoid and minimize impact to any wetland areas or their associated buffers are applied, and the applicant demonstrates that the project has been approved under all federal, state regulatory programs applicable to the project. Any impact to the wetland or buffer must be compensated for through mitigation measures where onsite or off-site mitigation is infeasible. Compensatory mitigation may be authorized under Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title nineteen oh two one fifty B. Due to the size and the location of the wetland, the applicant is proposing and has requested fill from the Army Corps of Engineers, which will effectively eliminate the onsite wetland and reduce the off-site fragments to that which would be considered a total loss. This total wetland loss would require the applicant to compensate for both onsite and off-site impacts and off-site impacts, which would be included in this proposal. The process to obtain a reasonable use exception should be the same process and criteria applicable to a conditional use permit. And this is outlined under seventeen fifty-two oh fifty. Before any conditional use permit is granted, the Hearing Examiner must determine the following that the use applied for is either listed in the conditional uses or allowed in the district or is significantly similar to one or more of the listed uses. Approval of the permit would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district in this applicable comprehensive plan and would not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. Granting the permit would not reduce dimensional requirements in the district and no license, no nuisance to life lived or property would develop. This property would be allowed, or this development project would be allowed in an R one zone as listed in seventeen sixteen oh twenty, permitted uses are as follows. Under A, single-family residences would be a permitted use. The development would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and not adversely affect other uses or properties in the immediate vicinity. This district in its entirety is intended for low-density detached, single-family dwellings in order to assure the maximum of light, air, open space, privacy, and the protection of property values. Other uses should only be allowed if they're compatible with these values and consistent with the overall public interest, where the proposed use appears consistent with the purpose of the district. The site plan shall conform to all city standards, and approving the application would not reduce dimensional requirements of the district. And B, that there's no indication that allowing this single-family residence in the zone would create any nuisance to life limit or property. The relevant code for wetland delineation and protection, the Ocean Shores Municipal Code outlines five possible criteria to regulate development activities in wetlands or their associated buffers. In this case, only only items number one and three would apply to the proposal. In number one, the Hearing Examiner, after reviewing pursuant to Section nineteen oh two one fifty, finds that A, no practical alternative exists for design, development, or use of the property in a manner that does not encroach into the wetland or buffer, and the prohibition includes the property that would be otherwise legal under all applicable city development regulations and feasible based on the character and circumstances of the property, and also that the project has incorporated measures to provide for compliance with subsection D of the section. Number three, the proposed development is within the original platted area and the use specified in the original plan of the of the Ocean Shores community, as evidenced by the covenants, conditions, and restrictions attached to the property by the developer upon first sale of the lots, and in all respects, otherwise is in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city, provided that all reasonable measures to avoid, minimize impacts to any wetland area or associate or associated buffers are applied, and the applicant demonstrates that the project has been approved under all federal and state regulatory programs applicable to the project. The Neville's project is located in the R one zoning district where a single-family residence is designated as a permitted use and would be legal under all applicable city development regulations and feasible based on conditions of the parcel. The typical single-family residence site design in Ocean Shores utilizes the majority of the parcel for structure, parking, and custom landscaping. This is in addition to the area required to construct a home. As this typical design would encroach into the delineated wetland and buffer of the Neville's parcel, the project was designed to mitigate these impacts. The wetlands associated with this, associated with this project are located on and off-site, and direct wetland impacts cannot be avoided in order to develop a building site for a single-family residence. The project proposes to use the city's wetland, weather wax, wetland mitigation bank to compensate for all impacts that may be necessary and authorized to make reasonable use of this parcel. The third criteria to allow impacts to either a wetland or a buffer is this mitigation of impacts. The process involves the purchase of credits in the bank that are available to compensate for impacts to a wetland or buffer that are authorized. The City of Ocean Shores typically uses a one-to-one ratio for impacts to wetland and buffer unless best scientific information would recommend otherwise. Due to the limited size of parcels in Ocean Shores, onsite mitigation is determined to be impractical in most cases. So compensatory mitigation is the method commonly used to mitigate impacts that are unavoidable. Planning recommendations, should the Hearing Examiner approve this development, the Planning Department recommends conditions as listed in addition to any conditions imposed by the Hearing Examiner. Condition number one, state and or federal fill permits must be authorized prior to development. Construction must be all current planning, zoning, building construction, required code requirements, and the applicant must craft and execute a wetland buffer mitigation plan, wetland or buffer mitigation plan that will compensate for all impacts to the wetland. In this particular proposal, the wetlands are located almost centered into the parcel, and after review with the with the applicant's wetland consultant, it was determined to be infeasible to try to work around this wetland. So a fill permit is being applied for and sought by the Army Corps of Engineers to to make use of this parcel. So a fill permit under conditions is being required prior to any construction being authorized, and that would be in the event that the Hearing Examiner would approve this development. That will be a condition. So that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I do have some questions for you, but I do see that the applicant's expert is here, so maybe we can get Mr. Frometh sworn in, so he's available to provide any clarification.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Hearing Examiner. I am seeing technically on my video is not lighting up on my screen. Are you seeing me?
I am not. I can hear you.
Yeah, okay. In terms of raising my hand and swearing in.
I can trust that you're raising your right hand, Mr. Frometh.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Now, thank you.
I am doing so.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record and explain your role with this project?
Sure. Christian Frometh, C H R I S T I A N. F as in Frank, R O M U T H. I am a wetland specialist with Aguatiera Land and Water Services. We provide all environmental consulting-related topics for wetlands and other aquatic sites as well. We have been retained by the property owner Gerald Neville's to assist with the delineation, mitigation, permitting assistance for his property there and the subject property of this hearing.
Great, thank you, Mr. Frometh. So I do have some questions that are directed to the city, but I have a feeling you're going to be the one that would have the most information, so just feel free to answer if you if you can. So my understanding is that this property contains a category four wetland that covers a large portion of the site, and it has a standard fifty-foot buffer that extends over the entire remaining area of the property. Is that correct?
Yes, everything you said is correct.
Okay. And so the applicant is proposing to to fill the wetland to accommodate this proposed development?
That is correct.
And then I did review your thorough report, but I think that it would be helpful if you can kind of walk me through the the site plan and explain the existing conditions of the site and how impacts from the proposed development were calculated. I have that at, I think, in my packet at PDF fifty-four.
Sure, thank you. So the the site plans, there are two sheets, sheet one and sheet two. Sheet one is, and these are both eleven by seventeen sheets of paper, and they are in AutoCAD drafting format. Sheet one, the existing condition site plan, has an aerial photo base and a LiDAR topography base as well. The parcel map is overlaid on top of that showing parcel boundaries, standard city setbacks from property lines, twenty-five feet in the back, twenty feet in the front, five feet on either side, construction setbacks. It also shows the footprint of the remaining portion of this wetland, and emphasis on the word remaining. I'll swing back to that in a moment. It also shows the fifty-foot buffer surrounding that remaining portion of wetland, and that's all on the existing condition site plan.
Great.
The the buffer is, was calculated as fifty feet. It is not a, City of Ocean Shores has two different buffer scoring systems depending on geographic location. Those wetlands associated with a shoreline have one set of buffer criteria, buffer sizing criteria. This is not that one. This is a site that is not associated with a shoreline, as Marshall had mentioned previously. It's governed by the Critical Areas Ordinance. Per that buffer guidelines, the buffer scored out here to be fifty feet on this site. The parcel size is fairly common it's within a size category that's common to City of Ocean Shore's single-family lots. The entire parcel size is seven thousand four hundred and sixty-six square feet or zero point one seven acres in size. Small lot, particularly when one factors in typical residential footprint impacts on a lot, house, driveway, garage, and any kind of limited amount of yard. The wetland location on this parcel is as central as you can get. It is, and it occupies roughly of the the buildable, when you subtract out well, of the lot itself, it occupies approximately eighty percent of the lot, maybe about seventy-five percent of the lot as a whole. The wetland is it's extent goes property, side yard, property line to side yard, property line, full width of the lot. It extends to the back of the lot and off of the lot in the rear. And in the front, there's approximately ten feet of non-setback, non-property line setback area, which the front yard setback is twenty feet. The wetland does not enter into that twenty feet of setback, but it extends to up to ten feet. There's only ten feet of quote, non-setback area on this property available for any kind of development, absent
I see that.
with the presence of wetland. Sorry, I hope that wasn't too confusing. Historically, in in recent history, in the last two or three-year period, there have been, this wetland used to be larger. It extended offsite. It still extends offsite to the west marginally, seventy-six square feet. In the last three years, it extended offsite, north and south. Those to those adjoining residential lots, they have since been built on, and wetland and buffer have been filled right up to the property line. So
Okay.
The trajectory of lots in City of Ocean Shores is that they've been plotted for residential, and they're on that pathway incrementally. This this is an example of a wetland that has been gnawed away at by incrementally by adjacent development. This is the last remaining lot to have, to be occupied by any portion of this wetland, except for the seventy-six square feet that is offsite. So that is a foundation. It gives us a lot that is totally encumbered by the wetland and the and buffer. Impacts are unavoidable and escapable. A proposed footprint for the developed, for the home site is a one thousand fourteen hundred and ninety-two square foot home, almost fifteen hundred. So modest-sized home and meeting that I would, well, I'm I guess conversationally, I'll say that that's sort of in the small, in the medium to small-size lot that's typical for City of Ocean Shores. The impact, the proposed impacts, so that's all existing conditions. Do you did you want me to transition to proposed at this time or pause?
Yeah, just a quick question then. Because the that you said the areas to the north, well, basically, the areas surrounding this parcel have been developed. Are there any off-site impacts that would need to be mitigated through this development, or have those been addressed with the other previous developments?
There is off-site impact that there's seventy-six square feet of this wetland extend offsite to the rear.
To the west there, okay.
Correct. And that per state and federal protocols, when a wetland is so substantially impacted that there's a minute fragment remaining offsite, and these are my words, minute fragment, but a minimal residual amount. It is the the remaining, the residual amount is considered a total loss in terms of wetland function, ecological function. Thus, the burden of mitigation for that portion, that off-site portion is applied to the applicant. Yeah, so they they have to, they got to cover it all.
Great, thank you. So then, yeah, perhaps you can just step back then and address the proposed development and the how the impacts were calculated.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to shift for anyone who might be following Visual Aid to sheet number two. The proposed, proposed conditions and environmental site plan. It shows the home and driveway situated on the lot. Within, the driveway, of course, is exempt from the structural setback from property lines that you have to there's no way to avoid that, and your driveway has to enter the lot. The home and proposed structural elements, not yard, not landscaping, are all located within the required front, front, rear, and side yard setbacks. The home, again, proposed home footprint, square footage is fourteen ninety-two square feet. The total impervious area proposed home flanking walkway, maintenance access walkway surrounding the house and driveway, that total is five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine square feet. And again, all located within the required structural setbacks from the property lines. The the balance, the entire lot, because it's a complete law, because of the small configuration of the lot and the configuration of the wetland, the entire lot is proposed for to be filled that would get, provide the property owner a small backyard and some, you know, modest front yard as well. Once and the and once the wetland is, so the entire wetland would be filled except for that modest seventy-six square feet offsite. So it would be considered, the total unit is be considered a loss unit, meaning wetland. Once the wetland is gone, there is therefore is no such thing as a buffer. The buffers only exist to protect wetland. there is therefore is no such thing as a buffer, the buffers only exist to protect wetland, wetland gone, no buffer. So the mitigation requirement with this proposal would be to mitigate one hundred percent of the wetland. So that total is, uh, five, I'm gonna give you two numbers, the onsite square footage is five-one-five-three, five thousand one hundred and fifty-three. The offsite is seventy-six. I'm I'm giving you three numbers, the grand total would be five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine square foot feet of impact. Um, mitigation is proposed offsite, there are no onsite options to recreate or move a a wetland on this small parcel. Proposed offsite via mitigation bank credit purchase at the city-owned Weatherwax mitigation bank. I'll stop there for questions.
And i- is that a one-to-one ratio or?
Oh, so, um, uh, and I'm, I'm gonna invite Marshall to provide some guidance here. The, I I have been working off of some, uh, perhaps outdated information on mitigation ratios. This is a category four wetland. The ratio that, um, I believe well, the ra- ratio that we're proposing is zero point eight-five replacement uh, credits for every one square foot of or one credit of impact, so translated, if there's one square foot of impact uh, to the wetland onsite, a proposed purchase of point eight-five feet offsite at the bank is proposed. Our rationale for that, for using a lower than one-to-one ratio is the following. Previously, I noted that the uh, wetland has been chewed away at by adjacent development. The the remaining wetland is ecologically compromised by the loss of area offsite from wetland area. Furthermore, it's been ecologically compromised by the loss of buffer offsite. The, o- on the map, we show where the wet- wetland buffer if they're i- in a, in a vacuum, if there was no surrounding disturbance, the wetland buffer extends off great distance offsite, that's all gone, that's all developed and built. So the the functionality of this wetland, the ecological integrity of this, what this remaining impaired wetland is impaired is our argument in favor of using a reduced mitigation ratio of the zero point eight-five. By contrast to the uh, the loss here, um, the gain at the Weatherwax site is of higher quality wetland and with buffer, with higher quality intact buffer. So the and the 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 proposal here is that it would actually be a net gain of ecological function at the Weatherwax site compared to what's lost here.
Mr. Reed, did you want to address that?
Uh, no, I I find that that's pretty sound, um, sound reasoning for a reduced ratio. And for the record, the, uh, the impacts that, um, Mr. Frommuth was alluding to, um, offsite in previous development. Uh, those buffers were also mitigated for, uh, fully in the Weatherwax mitigation site and the project that was mitigated to the north, um, I was involved in. Actually, I was involved in both, uh, mitigations, uh, but I was only involved in the, uh, development of the parcel to the north. Um, I didn't get involved in the mitigation on the southern lot, uh, in adjacent to this until afterwards, and those were all mitigated at a one-to-one ratio for those buffer impacts. And so we've, I I feel like we have adequately covered the loss of any of the additional buffer and, uh, reduce the wetland to a point where one-to-one, um, uh, would appear to be excessive as far as a mitigation ratio.
Yeah, and those details can be worked out in the 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 final mitigation plan. And my quick math, uh, I believe that would be four thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet. With that point, uh, eight-five uh, to one ratio, is is the, can the city confirm that there's adequate, uh, credits available still for that?
Yes, there are.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, Mr. Frommuth, if you know, do you know where the applicant is at in the process of obtaining a a letter of permission from the US Army Corps?
I can only, unfortunately, I can only re- respond to that with a generalized comment. The, uh, the applicant, the application, it's, um, they refer to it as a four oh four permit for, uh, fill and removal of wetland, uh, waters of the United States. It has been received and, uh, and it is into with by the gatekeeper at the Corps of Engineers who, uh, record, checks everything in. It has been dispersed to the project manager who will be reviewing the project. Unfortunately, the, there's been a change in staff, um, at the Corps. The, um, historic, uh, project manager for covering Ocean Shores who we've worked with previously on other wetland fill situations has been entered a new job, they have somebody new who is getting up to speed on, um, well, Southwest Washington in general, that they're they're from Los Angeles. So they, uh, they're they're in that process, it's it's on their desk and, um, I can't tell you more than that.
Thank you. Um, and then would the applicant or city have any issue, uh, with a uh, condition just requiring that the applicant, uh, comply with any terms of, uh, permissions granted by other jurisdictions? With authority over the the wet landfill?
Yeah, the the city would take no exception to that.
Great. Um, well, I don't think I have any additional questions for the city or Mr. Frommuth at this time. Uh, Mr. Frommuth, did you have any other, uh, testimony that you wanted to provide on this matter?
Um, I, I do not, um, yeah, I I think, and I appreciate Marshall pointed, I guess I do.
Okay.
Um, I I appreciate Marshall pointing out that there has also, uh, credits have been, um, in my words, uh, redundantly purchased for this, um, piece of habitat, this wetland and buffer, through the process of the incremental uh, development and surrounding lots. As an example, that like, so the the two adjoining lots, north and south, have purchased credits at the Weatherwax Bank. Because they went first. Had had the process been reversed, this, well, um, the subject property would have, had they gone first and had the scen- scenario remained the same, that unavoidable impacts and then complete loss of the wetland, then they would be purchasing the same credits we're talking about now, wetland-only credits. Um, and the neighboring parcels would not have purchased any, uh, no, no buffer or scraps of wetland, uh, credits, so there's been a redundancy or even if I may be so bold as a double jeopardy situation here where the the credits have been, a- an abundance of credits have been purchased beyond what was actually here in terms of the original resource, so further, uh, further support for the ar- argument of, uh, allowing a reduced mitigation ratio. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frommuth. Um, and do we have the applicant here today?
Gerald was going to try to attend, I'm not sure if, I'm not seeing him.
Okay. Well, I think then at this point, we should turn and see if there are any members of the public that wanted to comment on this, uh, first matter. Is there anyone in the room, Mr. Reed?
Uh, no, not at this time.
And then, uh, can we confirm whether there's any members of the public, uh, logged on to Zoom? Or are these all, uh, parties in these matters?
I believe these are all parties to the matters at hand.
Okay, well, thank you, um. Uh, let's see here, let me just make sure I've covered everything. Uh, well, Mr. Reed, any last thoughts on behalf of the city on this first matter?
No, I think we've covered everything adequately.
Okay, great, so I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this first matter. I want to thank everyone for participating, uh, I intend to issue my decision on this application uh, within ten business days of the record closing. And for anyone that was here for the first matter, you're welcome to stay, but you can, uh, leave if you'd wish. Thank you, and then, Mr. Reed, were you presenting on the next matter?
Um, well, the plan was to do that, um, if we had been through it in time, I'm ten minutes late from our next meeting, so Chris has graciously um, accepted the responsibility of presenting the next hearing, and I'm going to check out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
And Ms. Bro, I'll go ahead and do my introduction if you're if you're ready.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so next on the agenda today, we have number R U E twenty-four oh, 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 four, uh, which involves a request for approval of a reasonable use exception to allow for the development of a single-family residence and access driveway that would impact five thousand one hundred and sixty square feet of buffer area associated with a category one interdunal wetland that extends onto the western edge of the approximately point four-one acre subject property, which is located at three twenty-seven Sand Dune Avenue Southwest. The exhibits that I received and reviewed in advance of this matter include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, a wetland report prepared by Key Environmental Solutions and various notice materials. So I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Again, should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, uh, just please let me know when it's your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address, address, admitting additional exhibits at that time. Um, so with that, Ms. Bro, let's go ahead and get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today? Thank you, and can you please go ahead and state and spell your name for the record and explain your role at the city?
Christina Bro, it's B R B A U L T, and I'm an assistant planer.
Great, thank you, uh, did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I'd review in advance of the hearing?
Yes, it did.
Great, so you can go ahead and begin your presentation when ready.
Covered most of it in the introduction, so I'll just skip down to existing conditions.
Great.
Okay, so the zoning is an R one and land use is single-family, and it is not in the shoreline jurisdiction. The surrounding conditions are all R one, single-family, except for to the west, where it's a public recreational, P two. Uh, land use designations again are single-family and parks of recreation to the west. Existing land use, north, again, single-family, south, single-family, east is undeveloped, vacant, and to the west is dunes and Pacific Ocean. Background, the subject property addressed at three twenty-seventh Sand Dune Avenue Southwest is located in the southwest quadrant of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is roughly about three hundred feet north at Polaris. The property is zoned R one and located in a single-family zoning district. The zoning is immediate vicinity of a combination of R one and PR two. Impacting the lot for a single-family dwelling is a permitted use in this district. Um, public notice was sent out on October, scheduled for October eighth for this hearing and sent to owners three hundred feet in the subject property area on the twenty-seventh of September as required under Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty-two oh ninety. Um, staff has determined that the proposed development project is listed as a permitted uses defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code. Wetland and buffers exist on this parcel and surrounding parcels, which requires an approved applicant for reasonable use exception to impact the wetlands and associated buffers. The purpose of the rule is to allow for the parcel to be allowed and respected otherwise in accordance with the requirements of the applicable development regulations of the city. Uh, reasonable measures to avoid minimized impacts to the wetland areas and associated buffers. And the applicant demonstrates that the project has been approved under all federal and state regulatory programs applicable to the project. Any impacts to the wetland buffers must be compensated through mitigation measures where onsite and offsite mitigation is infeasible compensatory mitigation may be authorized. Okay, the standard review, the process of the reasonable exception shall be the same as the process for conditional use permit. Before any conditional use permit is granted, the hearing examiner must determine the following. Uses applied either listed as conditional uses or allowed in the district that is significantly similar to one or more listed uses. Approval of the permit will substantially consist with the purpose of the district and applicable provisions for comprehensive plan that will not adversely affect any other use of the properties in the immediate vicinity. Granting a permit does not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. Or no nuisance of light, limb, or property will be developed. This project is allowed in an R one zone underneath the Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen sixteen oh twenty. Single-family residency development is substantial consistent with purposes of the district and properties in the immediate vicinity, the district is intended for low-density detached single fam- family dwellings in order to maximize the light air and open space and privacy and protection of the property value. Other uses shouldn't be allowed in other capital and values of consistency with overall public interest. Whereas proposed, it appears consistent with purpose of the district. The proposed site plan shall conform with any city standards improving the application would be reduced by dimensional requirements of the district. There is no indication that allowing the single-family residency in this zone will create a nuisance of light, limb, or property. Okay, the summary. Uh, the wetlands delineation protection, Ocean Shores Municipal Code outlines five possible criteria to regulate development activities in the wetlands and their associated buffers. And then it want me to summarize if you're ready?
Yeah, you don't need to, uh, uh,
I'm just gonna go down.
Recite the recite the code, uh, we've heard that, so if you can just summarize the 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 project, uh, details below that.
The Gason Project is located in R one zoning district where a single-family residency is designed as a permitted use that would be legal under the municipal city development regulations. The typical single-family residential site design for the Ocean Shores use utilizes a majority of the parcel for structure, parking, and custom landscaping in addition to the area required to construct a home. The typical design will approach into the delineated buffer of the Gason parcel, the project was designed to minimize these impacts. The wetlands associated with this project are located on and offsite, but direct wetland impacts will will be avoided. The applicant has also set aside portions of the parcel as natural area in addition to the standard structural setback. This will provide a buffer to the protect, to protect the wetland. And areas of this proposal would typically be developed as yards, landscaping as contained for functional buffer. This demonstrates a second priority for the wetland development and minim- is minimization. Section D requires that only the minimal necessary to achieve the purpose shall be allowed, and any impact that are authorized must be mitigated in accordance to the best available science and applicable to the situation or setting. The project proposes that the city Weatherwax mitigation bank is compensated for the impacts that are necessary to avoid and make reasonable use of the parcel. The wetland buffer and mitigation of these impacts, this process involves purchase of credits of the bank, it is available for compensatory impacts to the wetlands and buffers that are authorized. The City of Ocean Shores uses a one-to-one ratio for impacts to that buffer, and unless this best science information would recommend otherwise, due to the limited size of the parcels in Ocean Shores, onsite mitigation is determined to be impractical in most cases, some compensatory mitigation is abandoned commonly used to mitigate impact impacts that are unavoidable. In addition, the mitigation measures that are conditional on this proposal, there is a long-term protective measure consisting with delineation fencing. Currently, the city is requiring proposals to include a two-brow fence and critical areas, the signage located at intervals of ten feet. Unmitigated portions of the buffer and Unmitigated portions of the buffer and wetlands. Based on this individual site condition, the city may allow coast in only certain areas to maintain an open look and feel for the development. Lineation fencing is required into bisected parcel. Shall it be required to have a two rail fence with a minimum of one critical area assigned per fence? In this parcel, each run at sections isolated in delineated areas. Shall have at least one sign placed at previously outlined. They may, the city may opt to modify these approved methods and long-term protection as site conditions level compliance dictate. These methods are to provide minimal level of protection that would preclude the owner from implementing more restrictive fencing as required of security or pet. Pet containment. Recommendation to the city, I mean, the recommendation should the hearing examiner approve this development, the planning department recommends the conditions. Construct must, construction must meet all current planning and zoning building, construction, and fire code requirements. Craft and execute a wetland buffer mitigation plan that will compensate for impacts to the wetland buffer. This plan should include delineation fencing and signage, and this will protect unmitigated critical areas during and after construction activities are complete. That includes our staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. I do have some questions, but I see the applicant's expert is here, so maybe we can get Ms. McMurray sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record and explain your role with this project?
Key McMurray, K E Y, M C M U R R Y. I'm, I am the owner and professional stream and wildlife biologist and wetland scientist for Key Environmental Solutions. I was hired by Gary and Teresa Geeson. Um, to perform the wetland buffer mitigation plan for them. And in for the wetland, uh, category one wetlands and the two hundred and twenty-five foot. Buffer that fully encumbers their, um, lot.
Thank you. So, um, from your wetland report, it appears that there's a category one interdunal wetland. That's located primarily off-site to the west, but extends onto, uh, the, the edge of the subject property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then you explained that the, the two hundred and twenty-five foot buffer. Associated with that wetland, uh, covers the entire property.
That is correct. It fully encumbers their lot.
So, um. Can you, uh, briefly describe the existing conditions of this site and surrounding area?
So the, um, both the lots to the north and south are already developed with a single-family residence and. Per the usual custom building line, um, they are not proposing, the geestens are not proposing to build any further west than what is allowed. For the houses for the north and south. And, um, they are proposing to leave all of the natural vegetation. It is very dense vegetation, as you can see from the aerials. Um, and so they are proposing to leave all of that natural vegetation except for what is being proposed for the driveway and the house. Um, they are also proposing to remove any un- non-native vegetation, which would include. Himalayan blackberry, Scotch room, and some gorse. There wasn't a lot of that, um, on their, on their parcel. But they are planning to just leave as much natural vegetation as possible. Onto the west in front of their yard, yard and house and along the sideyards. Um, the twenty-one feet of sideyard, um, proposed on the south and twenty-three sideyard to the north.
So, um. So it does appear that the. Structure could be cited further to the east, but the, the applicant is wishing to maintain that common. Kind of, uh, setback line to, I assume, to maintain. A view corridor, or what were the thoughts behind the, the sighting of this?
Correct. Just to stay in line with everyone else and to maintain that view corridor.
And then the, um. The driveway design, is that due to the, the topography of the site or other conditions?
It's kind of already there, the, it's kind of already zigzag like that, and so they maintained that without. Um, impacting any further natural vegetation.
Oh, okay, I see.
Otherwise, it would have been straight.
Okay. I can see from, uh, another aerial, the kind of. Area where that driveway would be, uh, located. Um, so, um. Can you, can you discuss how this project was designed to, to minimize impacts to the wetland buffer?
Well, again, we are, um, utilizing the existing driveway in that kind of S pattern. And, um, we are minimizing their footprint. They could have built a bigger house. They chose not to. Um, they could have expanded their footprint, you know, farther to the east, um, impacting more natural vegetation. Um, and they are choosing to build a two-story house. Um, instead of, um, uh, greater expanding their footprint. And with a single, single-story house.
And then I'm looking at, um. The aerial, is that the, the location of the house? That also, I, I don't know if you would call it disturbed, but are just lacking vegetation. Uh, was that considered also?
Exactly. It was already previously disturbed and partially cleared. So we were trying to utilize the area that was already. Impacted and partially cleared without art, without. Disturbing more, um, natural vegetation.
Okay. And then, uh. So the, the, uh, apart from the, the fire, just, uh, defensible space surrounding the structure. Would all the remaining, uh. Buffer area be preserved? There's not gonna be a, uh. The landscape yard or anything like that?
No, there is not.
And there would be fencing to protect those areas to the. North and south and, okay.
And to the west.
And to the west. Okay, great. Um, and then all mitigation would be, uh, compensatory through the, through the mitigation bank.
Correct. Purchasing the credits from the Weather Rocks Mitigation Bank.
And that would be, okay. Great. Let me just look at my notes, see if I had any other questions. I, I don't think I have any additional questions, uh, for the city or Ms. McMurray at this time. Uh, Ms. McMurray, did you want to provide any additional comments or testimony on this project?
No.
Great, thank you. I see that the, uh, applicant is here, Teresa Geeson. If we can get you on.
Yes, my husband is also here. Uh, he's the one in the Mount McKinley room. He's at work.
Oh, great. Let's, uh, if you could both raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
I do.
Great. So this is, uh, your opportunity to present any additional information about the project that you'd like me to know.
The only thing I would say is that from everything we can look at, the previous owner in two thousand thirteen had done the partial clearing. So they had a home site and driveway put in. Um, and we're just, we're just lining it with that for the most part. Uh, Key described it very well for us. We already decided to go higher versus a bigger footprint out. And we really, we currently have a place in Ocean Shores. We, we like the wildlife and the, the privacy, so we want to keep as much of that as we can. Um, including we will be replanting our, we're gonna have to cut an area for the power and water to go in. We'll actually replant that with natural vegetation when it's completed.
Great, thank you. And did you, uh, have a chance to review the, uh, conditions that were recommended by city staff?
Uh, if you're mentioning the, um. Needing of the fencing, uh, we have reviewed that. Uh, we've also talked directly with Key as well as with Marshall. He let us know that he has the signs, um, and we are already planning to put that in once we get an okay to move forward.
So you would have no issue complying with those recommended conditions?
None at all.
Great, thank you. Uh, anything further before we just check to see if there's any members of the public?
I don't have anything further.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Geeson. Um, can we just, uh. Confirm that there's no members of the public that, uh, want to comment on this matter, Ms. Bro?
There is no one else.
Great, well. Thank you, uh. Ms. Bro, do you have any, uh, last thoughts on behalf of the city on this matter?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so with that, um, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this second matter. I want to thank everyone. I want to thank everyone for participating today. Uh, I intend to issue my decision on the application within ten business days of the record closing. And if you were here for the second matter, uh, you're welcome to stay, but you can also leave if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And then, Ms. Bro, I assume you're gonna be presenting on the final matter for today?
Yes, I will.
So, uh, last on the agenda today, we have number R U E twenty-four oh, 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 five. Uh, a request for approval of a reasonable use exception. To allow for the development of a single-family residence with deck, uh, and associated access driveway with RV parking space. That would impact four thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet of buffer area. Associated with an off-site category three wetland on an approximately point one eight acre property. At fourteen thirteen North Jetty Avenue Southwest. The exhibits I received and reviewed in advance of this matter include the staff report prepared by city staff. The application and project plans, a wetland report prepared by Key Environmental Solutions. And various notice materials. So I will go ahead and admit those exhibits into the record. Again, just please let me know if you have any additional exhibits that you would like, uh, admitted when it is your opportunity to testify. And with that, uh, Ms. Bro, you're still under oath, so you can begin your presentation when ready, and you can, we summarize this as, as appropriate.
I do have one correction to the purpose area, and the R one is followed by single family, not retail. And the address area underneath the applicant was Key's app, uh, address. As of Ken, so we just need to change that.
What was the, uh, the first correction?
The R one is single family, not retail.
Okay.
And then. Was, um. Re-corrected down to PO Box sixteen sixty-one, Shekel Springs, California. Okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bro.
Then all of that, let's go to existing conditions. The zoning is R one, the land use is single family. No, it's not in a shoreline. Surrounding conditions, the zoning is all R one single family. The land use designation is all single family. Existing land use north is single family. To the south is vacant undeveloped lot, to the east is a vacant undeveloped lot, and to the west, I believe, a single family now. The subject property addressed at fourteen thirteen North Jetty Avenue Southwest, located in the southwest corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is Spinnaker Street Southwest, roughly about four hundred and thirty feet north. The property is zoned and located in a single-family zone. And is exclusively R one single family impacting. The lot for a single-family dwelling is permitted in this district. The notice again was delivered on September twenty-seventh to three hundred feet subject properties for this hearing today on October eighth. Staff analysis has determined that the proposed development project is listed as a permitted use underneath Ocean Shores Municipal Code. Seventeen sixteen oh twenty A. The purpose of this rule is to allow for the parcel that would be allowed. And its respects otherwise in accordance with the requirements of the municipal development regulations of the city. Any impacts to the wetland buffers must be compensated for through mitigation measures. Where onsite and offsite mitigation is in. Feasible. Terran, I've got, can't talk, compensatory mitigation may be otherized, authorized in the Ocean Shores Municipal Code. Trying to summarize as much as I can since we go through this, sorry.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think we're all aware of the criteria. Uh, this is our third matter here.
This project may be allowed in the zone per Ocean Shores seventeen sixty oh twenty. It's a single-family residency. This district is intended for low-density detached single-family dwelling is ordered. In order to assure maximum light, air, and open space, privacy, protection, and appropriate value. Other uses should be allowed if they are compatible with the values consistent with the overall public interest. The post-site plan will conform to all city standards, approving applicant would be. Would not reduce the dimensional requirements of this district. There is no indication that allowing for a single-family residency in this zone will create a nuisance of light limber property. Summary criteria for the wetland buffer impacts. The Ocean Shores Municipal Code outlines five possible criteria that regulate the development of activities in a wetland and their associated buffers. The hearing examiner will review the first. Pursuant with sections nineteen oh two and one fifty.
We can skip down to the, to the actual project.
The Smith and Mary Family Trust Project is located in R one zoning district where the single-family residency is designed as a permitted use, as a permitted use. It would. Be legal under the municipal city development regulations, and these will be based on the conditions of this parcel. The typical single-family residence site design in Ocean Shores utilizes the majority of the parcel for structure, parking, custom landscaping. This is in addition to area required by constructing a home. As is typically designed, would approach on a delineative buffer, the Smith and Mary Family Trust Parcel, the project will be designed. To minimize these impacts. The wetlands associated with this project are located off-site. So the direct wetland impacts will be avoided. The applicant has also set aside portions of the parcel as natural areas. In addition to standard structural setbacks, this will provide a buffer to protect the wetland. Areas of the proposal that would be typically developed as yards and landscapes will be maintained as functional buffer. This demonstrates the second priority of wetland development, which is minimization. Section D requires that only minimum, minimum necessary to achieve the purpose shall be allowed. And any impacts that are authorized must be mitigated in accordance with the best available science applicable to the situation at setting. The project purpose of the city's weather wax wetland bank compensates for all impacts necessary authorized. To make reasonable use of the parcel. Put us down to this. The Ocean Shores. Uh, the city of Ocean Shores typically uses a one-to-one ratio for impacts to the buffer. Unless best science information would recommend otherwise, due to the limited size of the parcels and ocean shores, onsite mitigation is determined to be. Practical in most cases, so compensatory mitigation is a method commonly used to mitigate impacts that are unavoidable. In addition to mitigation measures, there are conditions on this proposal where there are long-term protective measures consisting with the delineation fencing. Currently, the city is requiring the proposal to include two rail fencing and critical area signage located at intervals. That would provide notice and protection to unmitigated portions of this buffer in the wetland. Based on the individual site conditions, the city may allow coast only in certain areas to maintain an open look and feel for the development. Ten intervals. The city may opt to modify these approved methods and long-term protection. If the site conditions are level, the compliance dictates. These methods are to provide them. Minimum level of protection and would not preclude any owner from implementing more restrictive fencing if required for security or pet containment. Recommendations. Should the hearing examiner approve this development, the planning development recommends conditions as listed in addition to any conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. One, construct and must meet current planning, zoning, and building construction and fire code requirements. And two, craft and execute a wetland buffer mitigation plan that would compensate for the impacts to the wet, wetland buffer. This plan should include delineation fencing and signage that will protect the unmitigated critical area during and after construction activities. Are complete, and that concludes our stat report.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. Uh, I do have some questions, and, uh, Ms. McMurray, you're still sworn in. So, uh, please feel free to chime in. Um, so it appears from your report, your wetland report, that there's a category three wetland. That is located off-site to the west. Uh, with the standard a hundred and ten-foot buffer that covers the entire parcel. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then, so the, um. The National Wetland Inventory Map did show that potential for wetland on the site, but you confirm that the, the wetlands located. Entirely off, off-site?
That is correct.
Okay, and then.
Your honor, we think, you know, um, when the Smiths bought this property. Your Honor, I think you know, um, when the Smiths bought this property and they can correct me, um, how long ago? When they first bought this property, they bought this particular lot because of the wetland and the value of the wetland and the birds and for the enjoyment of the wildlife that the wetland brings. So just I wanted you to know that, that this is why they purchased the lot is for the wetlands.
Okay. And then um uh, I think it's uh in your report, you have a aerial photograph showing, I think it's the, the buffer uh, how far it extends. Is that where the wetland is located?
Yes, so the, the red lines start where I GPS the edge of the wetland. Um, there were some, you know, s- a small amount of willows. Um, it this is a depressional wetland. It is a, it is a pond that was dug, so there's a slope down into the wetland, so there are some willows coming down to the edge of the wetland area where there were some distinct hydroic soil edges, um, hydroic soils. Um, but there are some willows that you can see in the aerial. But where the wetland starts is where the edge of the um red line starts. And so the
Okay.
red li- the red lines are the hundred and ten-foot buffer.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure about that. And then um, can you just go ahead and uh describe the uh, you began to, but the, the other existing conditions of this uh site and surrounding area?
So um, as you can tell, um, the adjacent parcel has already been cleared. Um, and then the, their site has not been cleared, but it does have quite a bit of um, non-native Scotch broom, um Himalayan blackberry that they are going to be removing um and replanting with some native vegetation that I have shown um in my planting plan. And in the um last page of the mitigation plan, um, there for we're proposing to plant additional thirty evergreen huckleberry and forty additional salow plants. Um, and then the edge of the deck is, and the reason that we proposed um where we did was to allow a little bit of difference um of space in between the lot to the east and their house and then um have the deck overlooking the wetland, which is again why they purchased the property. Um, but to get rid of the non-native vegetation that is there and enhance the vegetation with native vegetation and the birds in particular really like the evergreen huckleberry. Um, they provide a lot of um food for the birds that are using that wetland.
Great. And then if you could just speak to the uh, how this project was designed to minimize impacts?
Um, so we um, instead of again, um, spreading their footprint out on a single story, they have gone two-story um to minimize their footprint. Um, and they have tried to again, uh they could have um expanded their footprint a little bit more towards the road, which would have encumbered a little or impacted a little more of the um buffer area. Um, and they tried to minimize it as far as impacting further back into the backyard um area. Um, and again, confining their space closer to the road as close as, as much as they could.
And then it looks like that driveway was located also in the corner, kind of further from the
Instead of, instead of pouring concrete and everything closer to the wetland, they put it all in the, that northeast corner.
And then so all the, uh, am I correct in all the remaining buffer area would be preserved? There's no usable yard space other than the fire dis-
That is correct. It will all be in native vegetation and any non-native vegetation, the Scotch broom, Himalayan blackberry. Um, I didn't see any gorse um out there, but will all be removed. And then the na- the na- native vegetation that is suggested will be replanted.
And then all, all impacts would be mitigated through the purchase of wetland credits?
That is correct.
Great, um, let's see. I don't think I have any additional questions for you at this time. Uh, is there any other uh comments on this project you'd like to provide, Ms. McMurray?
No, the, they are, they've been great. And they, like I said, they, they really want to be able to enjoy the wetland, and that's why they want to build up instead of out and look out over to be able to look into the wetland and um plant so the birds can also enjoy food and whatnot from from their plantings.
Great, thank you. So let's go ahead and uh get the applicants on here. And you're on mute right now. Hello, good day. Uh, we can, if you can go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So this is your opportunity, if you want to provide any additional details about the project that you'd like me to know.
Uh, o- other than uh when we bought the land, uh, the meter, the water meters in, the driveway was permitted, and we were uh, you know, ready to build. But of course, so you know, the cost and time uh is delayed over, we've gone that twenty years. But we've been paying for the water every month religiously. And now we're kind of being held up on how, you know, we don't even seem to have a much of a backyard at all. And I just thought you know, we haven't got the exact house plan. If we wanted a backyard for a little puppy to go out, whatever. You know, so there's a lot of sacrifices we're trying to make with this lot. And, and part of moving the house over was also we don't know if our neighbor will build five feet from the lot line. So we don't want to, we want to give them as much space, since we know there'll be no neighbor on the other side. That we thought we'd get the house closer, but we, it certainly has turned into uh more expense and less usable land and property. And really just um hard, hard to understand how uh we're we're, we're not able to really have an outside uh area, grass area, not, you know, natural grass, but you know. So that's, uh, this sounds like a complaint. It's not. I just, you know, over the twenty years, we've been ready to build now. We're, we're ready.
It sounds like there's been some challenges here, but hopefully this is the uh, the last hurdle. Um, did you get a chance to review city staff's recommended conditions? And would you have any issue complying with those?
Yes, we reviewed and no, we don't have any issues.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Uh, anything further before we see if there's any members of the public that want to testify?
No, thank you. Thanks, Key.
Thank you. And then Ms. Bro, I assume there's no one in the room? I see that we have uh somebody on the Zoom. Are you wishing to testify in this matter? They're labeled with the Galaxy tab. You're on mute. Oh, you're, you're still on mute. I can't, I can't, I can't hear you.
Um, you need to either press the mute button, the microphone button in the, on your bottom left, or you can press your spacebar. Sorry.
No, thank you for
We, we still can't hear you. So if you're on your phone, there should be a mute button down at the bottom. Or if you're on your tablet, which it appears it, it should be on your bottom left-hand corner, microphone. And you just tap that. Or you can pre- press your spacebar. Press and hold down your spacebar and it will unmute you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Um.
Uh, before, are you wishing to comment on this uh?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and get you sworn in, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you state and spell your name for the record, please?
I'm Patricia Smith. P A T R I C I A S M I T H.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'm like the uh Smiths that are uh planning on building. I bought my lot because of that pond as well. And my one question, I, you might have already stated this. But do you plan on building your deck closer to the pond, on that side of the pond? I think I missed that part. Is your, is your deck going to be facing the pond?
Yes, it's gonna be uh on the pond side and on the south side.
Now, is that where the driveway would be? Uh, the driveway and the, okay.
No, the driveway is in the northeast corner of the lot.
Okay. And then did you mention that your home would be a two-story or one-story?
It will be a two-story.
Two-story, okay.
And the deck will be on the second story.
On the second story, okay. And so that will, not bad at directions. So that's meaning your home would be closer to the going away from the ocean. Not towards
It'll be closer to the pond side than the lot to the east. We, they're buil- we um are very close, we are much closer to the pond side than we are to the lot to the east. Because we didn't know how close the people to the east wanted to build, and we wanted to give space for that. Plus, we wanted to be able to enjoy the pond as best we could.
Yes. Now, um, that lot has been filled for quite a few years. Is it, do, is it already filled?
Uh, the Smiths lot or the lot to the east?
Uh, the Smiths lot.
The lot, that lot has not been filled. It just has not been cleared. It is, it's ready to be built and cleared. It doesn't, it does not need to be filled.
There's not much vegetation there, is it?
There's quite a, there's quite a bit of um vegetation there. There's quite a bit of Scotch broom.
Okay. Okay. Just, just wondering. No problems. I'm just trying to trying to get uh an idea, a better idea. Cause um I'm a little concerned about the pond more than likely being disturbed than anything than anything else.
There will not be any disturbance to the wetland itself at all, just to the
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Smith.
And welcome.
And I don't believe we have any other members of the public on. Did uh city staff or the applicant want to provide any additional uh response to the comments we heard from Ms. Smith? It looked like Ms. McMurray was right there addressing them, but if there's anything further.
I guess I have a question. Patricia Smith, where actually are your, is your parcel located from where the Smiths are?
My property is across the street from the pond.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Great. Uh, is there any uh final thoughts uh on behalf of the city before we adjourn this matter and the hearing today?
Oh, no, I don't have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, I am going to go ahead and adjourn this matter and adjourn the hearing for today. I want to thank everyone for participating. Uh, I will issue my decision on this application uh within ten business days of the record closing today. So thank you again. Sorry for the, thank you for the uh, I'm sorry for the technical issues we experienced this morning, but we got through uh these matters, and I hope you have a pleasant day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.